Summer breeze.
You say.
You know the scent, huh?
I don't know.
But I'm the only person in the room that's seen him in concert. Seals and Crofts.
And I wouldn't tell many people.
No, I don't. No, I got my man cards still. Yeah, you're right. Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Columbia County Planning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us to our invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
I'll be with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for all the rain you brought us. We thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon this community. We ask that you look over our meeting tonight, that you guide us, give us wisdom. Best you look over all the folks that are here tonight and look over them as they go home and give them a safe passage. All these things in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen. United States of America. Public. And one nation.
Thank you. And if I could remind you to please silence your cell phones during the meeting. Gentlemen, we do have all five commissioners present tonight for a one-hundred percent quorum. You've had a chance to review the minutes from the July first meeting. If there are no additions or amendments to those minutes, I need a motion for approval.
Agreed.
Do your second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes as submitted passes five zero. You've also had a chance to approve the agenda tonight or review the agenda. I believe we do have one item that we need to amend. Commissioner Wilder.
Mr. Chairman, we need to amend item one, H two E one, individual plat for Watson Estate to make it a final plat for Watson Estate.
Okay. Gentlemen, other than that, I don't believe we have any additional items. I'll need a motion for approval as amended.
Agreed.
Do your second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as amended passes five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on August third, twenty twenty-one at six P M. in these same chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll provide you with a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this setting tonight. If there is an item in the public hearing that you would like to comment on, regardless of whether there is a motion to approve, deny, or to table, we will conduct a public hearing on all the items on the agenda. If you have something you'd like to comment on that's not in the public hearing agenda tonight, we have a public comments section. Just raise your hand. We'll ask you to come forward, give us your name and a home address, and take three to five minutes to give us your thoughts. That being said, we'll move right into tonight's agenda. And Ms. Neal, we have a temporary use authorization that's presented as information only.
Yes, sir. This is a temporary use authorization request at forty-three oh one Evans Stilox Road where the Rec Tech building is. It's on seventy-nine point seven-six acres, currently zoned M two general industrial. It was approved on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. This shows the location of the site, the M two zoning of the site, and the location that they plan to put an office trailer during construction inside the building that they're going to be doing for their offices. And again, it was approved on July sixth.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions with the information that was presented? Okay, we have a minor waiver and it's presented as information only as well. File MW two one dash zero seven dash zero two. Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This was a minor waiver that was approved at forty-one thirty-one Columbia Road on July first, and this was to reduce the front setback on the property for reinstallation of a billboard. This is the self-storage project on Columbia Road. It is zoned S one. Under that zoning, the required setback was sixty-five feet from the right-of-way line. When they went to reinstall the billboard, they'd had to move it. It was back there in the middle of the building. So this is the small portion of the billboard that comes in front of that setback line. So they were allowed to reduce the front setback by six and a half feet, which is the ten percent allowed for a minor waiver. And again, that was approved on July first.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff on this issue? Thank you. We'll move right into our individual, or excuse me, our final plat for tonight. This was our amended agenda. We got a final plat for Watson Estate. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you.
Yes, sir. This is a request for seven lots at fifteen fifteen Watson Bailey Road, currently zoned R A residential agricultural. And this is out at the west end of the county off County Line Road and Watson Bailey Road. And the proposal is to divide the parcel into seven lots. The intent of this is it is an estate that is being divided between four siblings. Have one sibling who gets the large tract, and the other siblings will get basically two of the smaller tracts, so they all end up with equal acreage. This is in front of you because the plat is creating more than four lots, and because Watson Bailey Road is an unimproved road, it is not paved at this time. It is a public county road. There are no county utilities out here, so there's no additional dedication of infrastructure with this plat, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Watson Estate.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. We'll move right into our public hearing tonight. Ms. Mistery, file R Z two one zero seven dash zero three.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is a rezoning for four five four North Bel Air Road, and it's point five one acres. Current zoning is R two, single-family residential, and the request is proceed to general commercial. Here is the location on the west side of North Bel Air Road. And this is the zoning. It is R two, and there are three more R two lots behind it off Marie Street. An adjacent zoning is P one professional and C C community commercial and some C one. You will see that there isn't any C two on this side of North Bel Air Road. Here's a close-up of the aerial. It shows a residential property and a street view. Existing site and a plat. And the proposal is for a fast food restaurant. It is, this is a plan for a Dairy Queen. Require the commercial zoning, and the site plan is submitted as a prototype. It's not actually designed exactly for this site. Several things on the site plan would not meet current code if this was submitted, including the landscape, landscape code for the landscape strips on Bel Air Road. The codes requiring the fifty-foot distance from residential property for the drive aisles. So this isn't a review of the site plan at all. It's just showing that a building can fit on the site. Just for comparison, this site is point five one acres. The new Dairy Queen at Grove Town near the Kroger was one point two seven acres. And staff have met with the applicants a few weeks before the submission to discuss options to maybe add adjacent property to the rear or the side to make the site plan work more efficiently. This is the proposal for a C two zoning, and as the adjacent zoning is C C, staff's recommendation is to disapprove the C zoning. This is the prototype design for a Dairy Queen. Again, it's just an illustration. It's not what would necessarily go here, and we have added some conditions in case it is approved. And this is a prototype of the sign, which is more of the covered pylon look, which is different to the adjacent new signs that have been permitted as monument style. This is the future lands use map. It is in the Evans Town Center, and so commercial zoning is likely in this area. And because of the reasons we've mentioned, the rezoning of C two is a disapproval, but we do approve the C C zoning with conditions that the building shall incorporate brick and stone, brick or stone, to a minimum height of three feet from the base, and a freestanding sign is allowed as a monument design only, not a covered pylon.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Azim Momin, and my address is.
Would you spell your first and last name for?
A Z I M. M O M I N. The address is four oh three Resort Trail. Augusta, Georgia, three zero nine zero seven. Additional information is we're looking at some variance from the behind residential lots. If we got some variance, then I'm looking forward to approval, getting an approval. Is that okay?
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, do you have any concern about the size of the lot?
No, not really. If we got the monument signs, that's okay. Or if we didn't got any monument signs, without signs, we should be okay too, because we have at the Grove Town, it's without any monument signs. There is just a three-feet sign, not the whole monument signs.
But your location in Grove Town is over twice as the size of this.
Yeah.
So my concern is how are you going to stack traffic here without going out onto North Bel Air Road? I love me some D Q ice cream and have been to both the stores here, and the lines are long, and I just don't want to create problems there. And so I just wonder if the site plan needs to rework on something that's more up to code. As a staff, please, please help me out here. Would we be better off to see what's actually going to go here rather than just fish in the dark?
I wouldn't say it's fishing in the dark. I mean, you could, this site could be developed for C C on this property. The plan that they've given us does not work, does not meet code, has several deficiencies within it. So again, we've said repeatedly, the site plan is not being, there's no vesting of the site plan at this point. There's no variances that have been applied for. It's just the zoning at this point.
As far as the plan concerned, yeah, you are right. Our, this is for, I think, I believe it's for Core seventy-two, which is we have right now at the Kroger location, the Grove Town. And this one is going to be around twenty seat, twenty seating, not the seventy-two. It's going to be a smaller building, I believe.
And there's no room for a D cell lane? And I wouldn't want to go to the expense, but I'm just, again, I'm trying to think of what the sheriff's going to say to us if we start backing traffic up onto North Bel Air Road.
Well, it is a state route. That's one thing. Two, it, D cell would be off of their property. So in order to install that, they would have to, they would most likely have to acquire the adjacent, some of the adjacent property frontage to be able to put that in. I don't know if that's been pursued. I'm not even sure that's required at this point. Obviously, we haven't gotten to that step, but your concern is certainly valid and something that we'll have to have taken into consideration as part of any site plan review process that we continue forward with.
Now, you mentioned that there were a number of things that were not up to code. What on the current proposed site plan would not be up to code?
Oh, let's see. So the front landscape strip would meet the back of the property, would not meet for the distance from the R two property for the drive-through lane. Again, that pylon sign, that's one that's being addressed with the condition. Again, could you fit this on this property? Yeah, you could, but you're losing, you're basically going to lose this, probably that off the back. You're, this is basically, that's not a very good drawing. I'm sorry. You'd lose, all of that would be gone. The outdoor scene would be gone, probably lose most of this section. Basically, you're taking it, pushing it forward for it to work. Again, could you fit everything on there? Yeah, you could, but it's going to be, you better not be off by three inches or something.
You said the seating's twenty?
Yes, it's going to be twenty.
So even if you take that off, you're roughly seventeen parking spaces. I mean, what is your plan throughput? That's a lot of traffic.
Do we know how many vehicles we can stack on this lot?
That was going to be my question. We're going to have cars backed out into Washington Road like I'm going to see tomorrow morning in front of that Dunkin' Donuts here in Evans with everybody in line trying to get them goodies.
Kind of seventeen parking lots from what Will just drew. Nineteen parking.
Nineteen spots.
He assumed four employees at any time, so that's average of two.
Guess you got a twentieth spot right there in the front. I don't know if that's a pull-through for somebody to deliver an order or if that's actually a parking spot there.
Umbered, maybe. That plan basically is not going to work, because what you're saying, Will.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's not going to work. We cannot approve this plan if it came in today. But again, the plan is not what's being approved.
Right, we're just trying to get him a lot to work.
Again, we have to tell you upfront that you not think this is being vested or anything.
The zoning that the request before you would allow a use of this type, subject to, subject to site plan requirements that are, you know, be attached to the code.
As a C C.
Right. So again, the use and what he's intending to do with the site fits the C C zoning, which is really the only thing you're looking at tonight. But your concerns about the site plan itself are valid, and we have made note of those.
Do you think there's any way to make a change to make it fit? I don't see how you could, you would be so small to get it fitted, it wouldn't be functional. It seems to me to be that way.
That's, that's where my house is, that size lot. That's where I live, and I'm trying to imagine a Dairy Queen and a bunch of cars going around the building trying to get ice cream.
All right, we may call you back up, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
What, we got to make two? We got to make two, right? One for the disapproval of C two.
I think you can make it in one motion if you're going to disapprove of C two but approve the recommendation of C C with conditions. If that's what you decide to do, that's fine.
Either that or you're going to disapprove.
Yeah.
Entire proposal. Or approve the.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove the request for C two and approve with conditions. File R Z two one zero seven zero three, zoning to C C at four five four Bel Air, North Bel Air Road.
Do your second. Do you, just as a point of clarification, are we doing it just straight C C? Are we adding the conditions as staff recommended?
Yes, sir. My motion is to approve with conditions.
I missed that, sorry. Just want to make sure. Do your second. My apologies.
Well, there's a second. What's the purpose in approving a C C and disapproving a C two? I don't follow what the logic in there.
You can see right here on the zoning map, the current zoning map, the subject property is zoned R two. On the south side of that, you have currently commercial zoned property at C C and a medical facility on the north side at P one.
So it's compatible with the surrounding.
It's comparable to the surrounding zoning. The C two that you see in this particular map is north of Town Center Drive on the east side. There is no C two anywhere in the vicinity. The adjacent properties that aren't C C are zoned C one.
In this situation, it still wasn't allowed at Dairy Queen enough room to work.
Well, but keep, but keep in mind, it doesn't necessarily have to be that one particular end user. It can be some other use that fits within the C C zoning.
I'm going to second from the chair so we can legitimately have discussion on this.
Fair enough.
So the site plan would have to be redone, reworked, and they would appear in front of us again? Or it would be a staff approval and it would go to the commission from us?
It would only have to come back for variances if they can't meet the code. If they can meet the code, whatever capacity that plan looks like, then it would just be site plan approval through staff. But you kind of get a sense that if this is their layout and these are generally what they're trying to accomplish, it doesn't seem like they will be able to do that cleanly without having to come back for one or more variances. But that's, again, speculation, and I'd rather we hear clear of that at this point.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any other questions? All in favor of denying C two and approving C C? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion fails three two. Mr. Butler, file R Z two one zero seven zero four.
Yes, sir. It's a request for rezoning at two two nine Lewiston Road from R one to S one for proposed plant nursery on thirteen point seven eight acres. The applicant has requested to table this request. We're going to move forward with the actual presentation. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Lewiston Road, just north of Mill Creek Lane. Currently zoned R one, pretty much everything around it is zoned R one. This is a church up here, and then down here on the, much further south, you see the C two property down there at the Kroger Development. Review of the site. Existing site. Again, that, so if you go to the picture, the reason that's there, there's a small widening project going on on Lewiston. Does apply to the property. Also, the development plan. So the request is for a nursery. That's kind of how the applicant has put it. From the, from industry standard, that's what they call themselves. We do not have a nursery in our code specifically. So from our standpoint, we have to kind of find what that is and kind of how that would function under our code. With, mostly with that, you know, we kind of look at, they have some retail components, we can kind of say, okay, so it's kind of commercial. But they do have tree storage outside, and we'll see here in a moment on the other plan, they will have storage of materials, piggery gravel, that sort of thing, which is only allowed in basically your industrial classifications. Also, they are essentially a landscape supply business. That's how we're viewing them. So we're definitely viewing it more like an industrial property. Again, going back to the plan itself, this will be their main sales area. Again, you have the trees all around it, trees and shrubs and bushes and things. This down here is not really defined in the narrative, and they have indicated that's not really to be considered as part of this request. So we go to the next part of it. This is zoning sketch, which does show multi-piggery gravel up here, a better view of the storage. Does, does show the buffers on the property, forty-foot buffers against residential, twenty-foot on the north side, again, following very much industrial standards, and then also one hundred twenty-five foot M B L from the, from the Sarlin Lewiston Road. This shows kind of the pictures of the proposed development itself. It looks very nice, again, very, very well kept, a very nice landscape supply business. This kind of shows how they would do that. They would, they would have, I believe it's fifty-seven stone for the parking areas in the actual development itself. This is the proposed sales area, our proposed sales building, excuse me, and then also the trees and shrubs. This is actually the new future land use map. This is not the final, how we want to present this. We're kind of in the middle of getting a new future land use map onto the G I S, using a PDF, so it looks, look as good as it could. So what you see here is all this, all this yellow is neighborhoods, character area. That's obviously really can allow for industrial development. There is, within the new comp plan, the ability to kind of take these areas here, have them grow somewhat organically as they go essentially north up the street, essentially. In our opinion, there's not really a good argument to say that, yeah, this meets future land use because it's, I believe it's nearly two thousand feet away from that area that's supposed to be developed with these types of uses. Due to those factors, staff is recommending disapproval of the request. However, they have requested to table until the August fifth meeting, staff is, is appropriate at this time. That's staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, do you have any?
Also, excuse me, there are some conditions in case you did want to approve it. We don't really go into that since there is a request to table this time.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Even though the applicant's requested to table, we'll open the floor in case anybody wants to speak either for or against this particular rezoning. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone to R Z two one zero seven zero four.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor to table until August fifth? Motion to table. Approved five zero. Ms. Montgomery, a variance to section nine zero dash five three, file V A two one dash zero seven dash zero one.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance in regards to the building setbacks at fifty-eight twenty-nine Carriage Hills Drive. This is in the Carriage Hills subdivision off Blackstone Camp Road behind Stallings Island Middle School and is currently zoned R two, single-family residential, as is the remainder of the subdivision. This is the River Island planned unit development to the northwest. This is the aerial of the site. You can see the existing house and the approximate location of the carport structure that started this variance request. There's been a couple other issues that have been come, that have come up during the review, including this fence on the back of the property that does seem to encroach onto the school board's property. The school board does have a condition regarding that fence and needing to be relocated off of their property. And this is the original grading plan. The applicants indicated in their narrative that they felt the ground in the backyard was less stable. So I did pull the grading plan to kind of see what might be going on with that. There, there's a little bit of slope in this back corner, but nothing particularly significant. This is the existing house and the existing carport structure. So the applicant did submit several photographs of the structure. This was constructed without any building permits, and based on the photos of the current setback, which is less than two feet from the property line, it's not able to meet building codes as it's currently constructed. So there will be some modifications required when, when we get to the point of wanting to permit this structure. The required setback in R two is ten feet from the property line. They're obviously well within that, hence the variance request. They're also within the five-foot drainage and utility easement that's on the side property line, so they need an easement encroachment agreement as well. That is in progress. That requires a survey to be submitted and a separate application that moves through committee into the commission. We have recently implemented a policy that the easement encroachment and the variance requests do need to move somewhat simultaneously. So the original reasoning for the recommendation to postpone was to allow that easement encroachment request to get submitted and get in, in process. We did subsequently hear some additional concerns in the H O A that they have not approved the structure in this location, and that also a fence had been constructed on the property that is significantly taller than the six feet that's typically allowed in a residential district. So we will need to include the fence in the variance request as well. With all these kind of moving pieces, staff is recommending postponing this application.
So staff is recommending, the applicant is not.
Correct.
Correct, not requested it. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, would anyone else like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. I believe some of us know you, but other folks may not.
Brett Russell, fifty-eight eleven Carriage Hills Drive, Martinez, three zero nine zero seven. And I come to speak in opposition to the variance request. The lean-to structure or the structure they build on the side without the proper permit, does it meet with the nature of the rest of the community? It would be the only one available there. We don't have storage for boats. I believe that's what they're putting there. There are no other carports in the community. In addition to that, the fence, as you noted, is above the level that we would allow as a homeowner's association. The homeowner's association has written them, and they have responded as of today and asked for help from the homeowner's association to figure out how to make this happen. I am on the homeowner's association, but I'm not speaking as a representative. I'm speaking person. I appreciate the opportunity to do that. It's my fear that this opens a Pandora box or slippery slope is, might be more appropriate talking about zoning, which we would then begin to allow other structures of a similar nature in the community. Community's been there twenty years. We don't have anything like this to the present. I would hope that we will not have anything like this in the future. That slippery slope, I believe, could eventually begin to negatively impact the financial aesthetic value of the community, the financial value of the property over a period of time before these structures are developed. Or I would appreciate your objection of your call for a variance.
Mr. Russell, I have a question. Ms. Montgomery mentioned that they were having a stability problem with part of their backyard. Have, since you've been on the board, have you had any complaints of compaction problems from any of the other residents with regards to?
I've only been on the board for a year, and the answer to that is almost a year. I've only been on the board for a year and the answer to that is almost a year.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions to Mr. Russell?
You all have an ARC review declarations?
Again, sir.
Should they, should they have come to you guys first before they felt this?
They should have come to us, based on my understanding of the process, they should have come to us prior to any construction. Homeowners Association would made aware of the building, structure, sent the petition to this letter, which should have been your packet, advised them to come to us and respond by end of day tomorrow. We received that today. I just-
I would like to thank you for the letter that you, you sent me via USPS, and I have given that to staff to include for the record on this, in addition to the emails.
No, I didn't. I scared that.
Whole different ballgame, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a whole different world.
See what you inspired all those years ago?
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir.
My name is Salvador Moreno. I'm actually ne- neighbor next to the house. And yeah, I noticed one day rise that fence and say, ah, what is this? Doesn't look right. And honestly, I, I don't think this need to be allowed there.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Would you, would- Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us your, your name, home address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
Well, I'm Dennis Primrose, and I live at 5767 Carriage Hills. And I just wasn't sure what the motion was to postpone.
We haven't made a, well, they, they, staff has, has recommended that we postpone it until the April 5th meeting, but we, we can make a motion to approve, deny or to accept the recommendation. So give us what you got.
I don't understand what you're going to-
They haven't made a motion.
We have not made a motion yet. We have a recommendation from, from staff to postpone until August 5th because there are a couple of issues they're trying to get resolved, one of those being the survey on the back of the property. So we can, we can look at exactly what the issues are with the site and include those in any conditions if we decided to approve it or use those as a basis to disapprove.
Disapprove of the request to build this carport. What happens to the other issues that have up on that property?
Which issue?
Well, the fence and coaching on the school.
The, we have a condition in here that deals with that, that the school board has asked us to put in, and, and I, I believe I spoke to Mr. Russell or Mr. Quibodeau, and one of the two told me that they noticed a survey crew back there a couple of days ago. So I think the school board's being proactive in getting a survey done to see if that is in, in fact, an issue we need to deal with.
I just, I would hate to see, again, agree with Brett, structure built so close to his, kind of carport at that. Second.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to postpone until August the 5th. August 5th? But 4th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA 210701 to the August 5th planning commission.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor to postpone until August 5th? Motion to postpone carries five zero. All right, we've got one item left here. Ms. Mystery file VA 21-07-02. And is this a staff or a applicant request to postpone until August 5th?
We, we've had to re-advertise it, so the, the public hearing will be at the, the next one.
Okay, so we can't hear this at all tonight.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So we've got an issue with the language in the advertising on this, so we will not be able to conduct this public hearing. So that being said, we'll leave that, go to staff and commissioner comments. Any public comments? Okay. Gentlemen, the hour of adjournment's upon us. A motion from someone. Leave. So move, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries five zero at 6:34. Mr. Sterling, I led you astray. Next meeting is August 5th at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thanks for coming out. The staff has a bet on how long the meeting's going to go, and whoever wins gets to pick what we have for dinner next meeting.
We've, we've had, we've had those.